I call a meeting to order. First item is special presentation, Easttown Elementary School to read their writing on what makes a good leader. I'll call on our teacher Kelly Hill to come up and introduce each one of the students. And students, as she calls your name, if you will come up to the table and have a seat, please.
All right. First we have London Alvin. She is in kindergarten. All right, and then in second grade, we have Kylie Tedesco, and she, like I said, is in second grade. In third grade, we have Xavion. Is that Swearingen? Swearingen, all right. Here, Swearingen. Sorry. Here, excuse me. Come on, Xavion. All right, and then in fifth grade, we have Delia Borden.
Yes.
All right, who's gonna start? You gonna start?
London, would you like to start us? Pull the microphone over close to you so we can hear you and read to us.
In the microphone.
All right, we like that.
A leader is respectful.
Thank you very much. Pull the microphone towards you.
A good leader is guiding people.
Thank you very much.
You might have to help me. She might not be able to read those words. He writes very neatly. All right, you're gonna help me, you want me to do it? Do you want me to do the whole thing? Okay. All right, what makes a good leader? What makes a good leader? Leaders should be brave because if they are not brave, no one will follow them. People really want to be safe with their leader. They don't want danger with their leader. A good leader should be responsible. So if they make a mistake, they do not blame it on someone else. Just take the blame if it was you that did it. A good leader should be honest because no one will follow someone who lies to people. A good leader should be respectful to the people that follow him or no one will follow him anymore, and the people that works for the leader will quit. A good leader should be respectful because no one will follow them if they are mean and not nice, and they always talk about people behind their back. By Xavion. All right, can you slide that one?
Before we read this essay, I want you to know, these traits and other traits make a good leader. It takes good character traits to be a leader. Do you have the right traits to be a leader? Bravery. You need bravery to be a good leader. Bravery is when you take courage to stand for what you think is right. You need bravery when a rule is something that's not right. To be a good leader, you need to help the people you want to help make good choices. So bravery is in a leader. Honesty isn't a good leader. You need to be an honest leader to help others. Other people need you to be honest so they can depend on you. Honesty is being able to depend on someone to tell the truth, like siblings, parents, maybe coworkers. You need to be an honest leader. Perseverance. This last character trait is an important part of a leader. This is called perseverance. When you have perseverance, you have the power to keep going. Even when things get hard, you push forward. If you made a mistake and threw out your project, you can learn from it and redo it. Perseverance is an important, so it is in a leader. Do you have perseverance? Conclusion. The reader should come away knowing that honesty, bravery, perseverance, and other traits make a good leader. You should also think about what do you have to be a good leader? Leaders are people who know how to help their family, their friends, family, and people.
All of you did an excellent job, and we thank you very much for coming up here and reading to us. Would you pass on to the school? We thank all of the teachers at school for doing this, and to the parents, thank you for coming up. We're gonna come out there and take a picture with you.
Oh, yeah. We'll just take it right here, and we're gonna, you're gonna look this way, and we're gonna get right behind you, okay? Very good. This one's about as tall as I am.
Everybody's not tall, is it?
Look up. Looking bad.
Thank you. London, thank you.
Is Benton not coming?
No, he's not here.
Is he okay?
Yeah, he's absolutely happy to get his parts switched on.
Oh.
Item number two is approval of minutes. Consider approval of the November 6 regular session and November 6 closed session minutes.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Aldrich, second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number three is a public hearing. A public hearing to consider a conditional use permit 17-006. First half staff come up and introduce.
This is conditional use permit 17-006. This was actually a request for continuation of the existing use, which is unlimited electronic, mechanical, manual skills game per our previous ordinance. This was heard through 17-005, in which case it was actually rejected, so now it's being brought back after substantial evidence was presented. Applicable standards include the findings of fact per 92-101E. The notice that was given to the property owner and adjoining people with standing was via mail and an erection of a sign to meet state statute. Okay. There was a staff analysis done here on 17-006. A lot of it was previously built on 17-005 in this application. The applicant did furnish considerable new evidence for the conditions that were stipulated under 17-001. It was important to note that, under what I had seen when I visited the site, he seemed to actually have met a lot of those new conditions. As you can see in the pictures of the site visit, there's no further conditions. You're allowed easy access for 17-001, so this is missing. No one's beeped in anymore. This is a count of the number of units on site. He is under 20. At the time, we actually counted these fish games, although they allow for numerous players, we counted it as one at the time. That's not how it is in our new ordinance, but that's how it was previously before this. This was post the adult gaming establishment ordinance. Again, you see this was removed for the lock, the electronic lock. Now, there was something of note was, one of our requirements is that gaming establishment will promptly post the rules of the sweepstake games. That was one of our conditions. That's not really the, in this case, it hasn't happened. This is the thing closest to it. I actually did though, get a chance to, I've visited the site numerous times. This time, when I actually visited the site, I asked one of the attendants to help me out to see what I can do. There's numerous, you know, these are consoles, so there's actually numerous games on them. So it'd be kind of hard to post all the applicable games, you know, all the rules on it, but you can ask them to, you know, click it, can you show me? And he showed me, one of them showed me kind of the rules, you know, how do you score, what are the numbers, et cetera. So they're actually on the consoles themselves. They're not necessarily posted on, you know, out in the public. They're in individual consoles because there's individual games on them. There's multiple games on these things. So that was pretty much the only thing that I saw per the 17-001 conditions that wasn't necessarily met by having it explicitly posted exterior, but indeed it was on their apps. And that's pretty much it. That was the gist that was noticeable, and the difference between application 17-005 and 17-006 was that they furnished this information, and it's in their application for sure. I'll actually pull that application up as well. Are there any questions at this point in time?
Nasser, do you have the Bible there?
I do.
This is a public hearing. Anyone who has standing is welcome to speak for or against, and to address each of the findings of fact. In order to have standing, typically you're either gonna be a property owner, you're gonna run a business, or you're gonna be some adjacent property owner. Is anyone here who cares to speak, please come forward, and we will swear you in. Nasser, go ahead, both of you put your left hand on the Bible and raise it right. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you about give be the truth and whole truth and nothing but the truth so that you help you God?
That is.
Nasser, you have emails, have questions? Abner, before I turn it over to Mr. Chan to speak. Okay? Let Mr. Chan come up and speak then.
Hi. Hi. Like Nasser previously mentioned, we are operating within the city ordinance, and yeah, we just, for the rules being posted, all the individual games have rules in them. It's just, we have over 80-plus games. We just, like visually, didn't know how to post all 80 games on the board. So, but I have staff all day that if anybody raised their hand, they're right there.
Council, we're gonna go through the findings of fact before we vote on them, and if you have any questions on them, and I'll give Mr. Chan a opportunity to comment on them too. The first one is, "The use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to plan as submitted and provided." You see in this paperwork his response. Does council have any questions of Mr. Chan about his response?
Mayor, before we vote on the finding of facts, do we need to close the public hearing?
I'm going through them now to give you a chance to answer, and then we'll go back and do that. I'm giving you a chance to ask him any questions on the four findings of fact.
So, one, step by step, is that right?
Right. We're gonna go one by one, give you a chance to ask any questions.
And then close.
Council have any questions on the first finding of fact? Any questions of Mr. Chan? Or staff? I'll move on to the second one. "The use meets all required conditions and specifications." Again, you see his written comments. Do you have questions for him or staff? Hearing none, we'll move on to the third. "The use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or alternatively, that the use be a public necessity." Again, do you have questions, Mr. Chan, or of staff? The fourth one, "A proposed use is in harmony with adjacent uses in terms of location, scale, site design, hours of operation, and operating characteristics." Does council have questions? And the fifth one, "Be in general conformance with the adopted plans." Council have any questions? Mr. Chan, the only thing I've heard, I have had several calls from the public, there was concern, but as I mentioned earlier, you have to have standing in order to speak here tonight of that. I did hear complaints from people who have standing regarding parking.
Yeah.
You cannot park in the fire lane.
We apologize for that.
Make sure they're in parking spaces and not in the fire lanes. Council, you have any questions on any of the findings of fact before I close the public hearing?
No, but Your Honor, I would echo those words about the parking, because that's things that have come to my attention as well, in the fire lane.
Mr. Chan, I'm not sure if you're aware or not, but are you familiar with the new legislation that some state representative plan on proposing to limit the machines to no more than four per site? I've seen that on the local news tonight.
Yes, currently that's still in legislation, so I have no direction from my superiors on to what to do.
Yeah, at this point, there is nothing to do, but we want to make sure you know of that. In case it does pass, if it does pass, it would make a significant difference in your business.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Council have any further questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. We'll go back and go through each one of the findings of fact and vote on each one individually. Number one, "The use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and provided." All those in favor, raise your hand. I'm sorry, did I not close the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're not.
Yeah, we did.
You closed the public hearing, my fault.
Yeah, we closed the public hearing.
I need a motion on the finding of fact before we vote on it.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve the first finding of fact, second by Councilmember Bramlett. Further discussion? All right. All those in favor, raise your hand. Those opposed, motion carries. Second is, "The use meets all required conditions and specifications." I need a motion on that.
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Aldrich. Second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Third is, "The use will substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or alternatively, that the use be a public necessity." Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes, second by Councilmember Bramlett. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
No.
One no. Fourth one, "The proposed use is in harmony with adjacent uses in terms of location, scale, site design, hours of operation, and operating characteristics."
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend. Second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. And E, "That it be in general conformance with the adopted plans," and if you're gonna put any conditions on it, we need to know if there's any conditions this time.
Does this approval go through the six-month deal?
First one was six months. You have to decide if you want to put any little time period on it again.
How do we do that? Just make a motion that...
I need that in a motion.
I move that we do the six-month thing like we did before.
That it is in general conformance with the adopted plans, with the condition that we put a six-months time period on it for review.
Just think about the other conditions too. If you want to keep those, you'd have to go through approving all those individually as well, or you could just say, keep the same conditions as previously established.
On the previous one.
Okay.
That's probably the easiest thing.
And this motion applies to the previous four findings?
All the other conditions that were on it, the first six months, is that what you're saying? All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Bramlett that he moves to approve that it is in general conformance with the adopted plans, that it also meets all of the restrictions that were adopted in the first six months, and that we put a six-months review on this one.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldrich. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Staff, that's all you need, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, that's all we'll need. Thanks.
Next is agenda adjustments. Have one adjustment that was requested is the closed session be added at the end for economic development, real estate, and personnel. If council's so inclined, I need a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Unannounced allegations. Mr. Sasser, did you want to speak tonight? Okay. Administrative report?
Yes, he does. He just doesn't go.
Administrative reports. Monthly departmental reports are in your agenda. Does anyone have any questions?
Excellent reports.
Hearing none, we'll move on to unfinished business. Request for approval of the updated facilities use policy, as in your agenda tonight, council, and has some updates from our last meeting. Do you want to bring that up and let us discuss it? Lindsay, are you making the presentation? Who's making the presentation?
Sure. Page eight.
We are there.
Page eight.
So the changes you'll notice from our last meeting, from what we could gather that council desired, there are no more split days, no more half of Monday, half of Tuesday, any of that. The fee for a half day is now the fee for a full day. So that's one change. For long-term rentals, there's now a caveat there. The fee only applies to performance days for rentals over consecutive weekends. That eliminates that concern of charging for those blank days of sorts for the people to rent. And then, as you can see, I think Mr. Bramlett was the one that was concerned about this for academic presentations, business people. At the very bottom, exceptions to the use for performance arts only. That may be able to be amended if we have appropriate notice that we can contact the people we have a lease with. So those are the changes that we made based on council's input from last meeting.
Say a group wants it for two consecutive weeks.
Weekends.
Weekends. They would only pay for all the weekends?
They would only pay the nights they perform.
What would we do if somebody else wanted it during the week?
They would not be able to use it.
Because we're not charging during the week?
Right. So that was kind of the conflict with that desire, is that if you don't want to charge for the days they're not using it, they're still gonna be set there, they're gonna have materials there. It's gonna prevent us from leasing to anyone else, or renting to anyone else. So that's kind of a trade-off there. We either charge for those days, or we lose the option to rent for those days.
And I could see, may I? And I could see with theater particularly, whether it be little people theater or big people theater, if they did it for, I mean, I might as well throw it out there. We've got two theater groups here, URE Players and the Talent Company. I could see URE Players needing it for the last week before a performance, and then opening Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then a catch back up on Thursday for another Friday and Saturday. So I could see us actually having them, having, for instance, we could practice out there that we're not getting any money for. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, so only when they charge or take tickets for performances would be the days they pay for.
So, I mean, I have a little bit of concern there, but, again, I would rather make it very, much more manageable and affordable so that it'll be used.
Would they pay the energy fee if they go in and practice on the days they don't have performances? Would they pay the energy fee?
That is something that we did not specify. They still pay energy fee. So as it reads now, they just are not charged if they're not performing.
Well, if you're gonna do it, like Ms. Hall said, two weekends, you're looking at $600 one weekend, $600 the other, but if they're gonna practice four days during the middle of that, I do think that maybe we should look at an energy fee.
And if we want to add that caveat that you only pay the energy fee on dark days when you're not performing, then, you know, we could certainly put that in.
Council, what's your thoughts on that?
I like that. I think that's fair.
So I would entertain a motion that we approve it with that change.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall that we approve the current provided information with the inclusion that on the dark days, we would charge the energy fee.
Mayor, you're talking only about the central school auditorium right now, not entire policy, right? Yeah, I do have something.
Okay, then let's approve that, then we'll come back and prove that.
Then this is just page eight. Just page eight.
Motion by Councilmember Hall. Second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, Mr. Townsend, now with...
My concern is on page seven. I guess, you was expecting that.
I was expecting that, yes.
Okay, all right. I guess in regards to the water center, at our last meeting, I asked for clarification about the cleaning fee, and I knew about the refundable damage deposit, but I think it might have been the director that stated that the cleaning fee is included in that base rental fee, which it always have been, but I still see that $75 cleaning fee out here on the policy, and it's gonna be misleading.
Right. I'll let Lisa address that because that is her purview.
The cleaning fee is included in the $2.50 for five hours.
So that it won't be misleading, I guess if the general public had to get this policy. Because the way, am I the only one that interpreted that way?
We can strike the cleaning fee column.
Okay, let's clean that up. I just wanted clarification on that.
Not the whole thing?
There are some in here that I don't think is included.
No, for the banquet, I guess I'm looking in particular for the banquet room.
Just for the banquet room is the only one that is included, so just scratch that out. Everything else needs to stay.
Gotcha.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we'll do that.
Any further question on any additional part of the policy?
What is Class G?
Class G is a non-city resident, if I remember correctly, but I'll... Yes, it's a non-city resident.
Any further questions? If not, I'll entertain that we approve the entire policy with those changes in the community auditorium and the banquet room that Mr. Townsend brought up.
Leave approval.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion?
And as I made the motion, I would just say that now if we go out and, we can always come back and look at this if, at any point in time, and I really want folks to hear that and to understand that, because we're of the opinion, I think, entire council, again, that we want it utilized.
Yes.
And if it looks like we've still outsold ourselves, if you will, I don't think we have, but thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
I'll distribute this with the changes so you can see that they were about it by thank you.
Number six, "Consider a resolution accepting a loan offer from the Clean Water State Revolving Fund for rehabilitation of the sanitary sewer collection system Phase Two and rehabilitation of the electrical system Phase One at the Long Creek Wastewater Treatment Facility." Mr. Leonis, do you want to say anything? I will give you that opportunity before we vote, if you wish to.
Just other than this is a part of the normal process in the loan development, or as the loan proceeds through. The preliminary engineering report was received and approved by DEQ, and at this time, that's when they extend the formal offer of the loan. Currently, our design, we're in the process of the design, actually met on some of the, on part of the design today with the consultants. We are about 80%, 85% complete on design, and about 60% on Contract One, which is the sanitary sewer at the wastewater plant. We're about 60% complete on that design.
Council, if you'll notice, this is a $4,766,000, but they are going to give us principal forgiveness, basically a grant for 500... us principal forgiveness, basically a grant, for $500,000. So the loan will actually be for $4,266,000. Hard talk of them, high numbers. And it would be a 20-year loan at 0% interest, 2% loan origination charges. It's hard to beat 20 years at 0%.
We don't have to start paying this till it's finished.
And it doesn't until you finish.
Till we're finished.
Until which part is finished?
20 years.
Till the entire project.
I'm about to roast you.
Considered as one, so both contracts would have to be finished, but both contracts are probably going to go in parallel.
Go ahead. Now go ahead.
Let me ask my question. Mike, I know there's usually a closing cost or a fee that's associated, you have to pay upfront.
2%.
2%.
Is that, is that due at completion of the project as well, or is that typically due a little bit earlier? It might be due at contract execution.
I believe it is due at contract execution, because we'll actually get an invoice that comes from them, saying you owe us the 2% closing cost. It's not, it does not, does not have to come with this, with this approval process.
So follow-up question. Michael or, Michael, when do you think that might be?
Right now, we're looking at going out advertisement for bid in late spring, early summer.
Hmm, so that sounds, it might be next fiscal year.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That'd be something we had to take into account.
That's just, no, I was watching, I'm just paying attention.
Design documents are due to DEQ in January, and then they take about 90 days after that.
Thank you.
Loan closing costs that Michael is talking about is projected at $85,000, and that is in the paperwork that you have tonight.
That's right.
Also, the contingency amount in here, 384, I didn't do the percentage on that. Is that low?
That is roughly 8% to 10%. And at this point, that's what we're looking at. A lot of times, they'll try to move that contingency to like 5% after they get the construction bid prices, but at this point, in prior to bidding, we're going to keep the contingency at that.
It's roughly 10% of the projected construction costs.
Yeah, okay.
And that's not unusual at this, in this portion of the design phase, to keep the contingency at the 10% level.
Hopefully, that won't be as complicated as rebuilding a water treatment plant.
Yeah, hopefully not. I will advise we're getting into an antiquated electrical system at the wastewater plant, and, you know, there's elements and components there that are, you know, as old as the plan itself.
And we do not know what we're going to hit as we go up by the shopping center and all, because we don't know what all is under that ground yet. So we'll, may hit something up there we have to change.
Excuse me.
Any questions? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval, Resolution 17 dash something.
29.
29.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. I'll entertain a motion that we pass Ordinance 1729.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. You have a contract in your agenda tonight to consider a contract with Stanley County Board of Elections for the 2018 municipal election cycle. It is a contract about what they will do and what their anticipated expenditures will be. As always, we have a base amount, which is not nearly what it used to be, but it would be a little more expensive if there has to be a primary runoff.
Move approval.
Second by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Nerma, it is consider a resolution to accept the donation of property. This is a resolution to accept some property from the J. Heath Morrow heirs. It is between Third Street and Fourth Street, and between, and runs along Martin Luther King and South Street. This is a area that we have been looking at for some time. The heirs have agreed to donate it to us. In your agenda tonight, or at your desk tonight, is a resolution that has just been completed. Whoever makes the motion to accept, if that's what you choose to do, I would love for you to read that into the resolution. It looks like we've got a duplicate number, so we need, we'll go back and address the other one in just a minute. Resolution 1729 is to honoring J. Heath Morrow and family. I'll entertain a motion, and someone who wants to read it into the record.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, and second by Councilmember Bramlett. Further discussion? Ms. Hall, would you read it into the record?
Resolution 17 dash whatever we fix that number. We'll stay with 29. Thank you. Honoring J. Heath Morrow and family, whereas J. Heath Morrow was an Albemarle resident for over a century, and his family has resided in the city of Albemarle since 1897. And whereas the J. Heath Morrow family donated 1,400 acres of land for the establishment of Morrow Mountain State Park, which continues to be an economic draw for tourists for the city of Albemarle. And whereas J. Heath Morrow was a prominent businessman and community figure, owning the successful hardware store Morrow Brothers &amp; Heath Company in the city of Albemarle, directing North Carolina Savings and Loan for 46 years, directing Cabarrus Bank for 15 years. And whereas J. Heath Morrow was dedicated to bettering his community and served from the Albemarle Board of Education for 30 years, on local hospital boards for 30 years, and attended First Presbyterian Church as an active member from the age of 13. And whereas the J. Heath Morrow family is widely recognized for their generosity and contributions to the community, and whereas the heirs of J. Heath Morrow wish to continue his legacy by donating this property, and whereas J. Heath Morrow enriched the lives of all with whom he came in contact, and now for, now therefore be it resolved, the mayor and city council of Albemarle City, the city of Albemarle hereby extend our heartfelt gratitude to the J. Heath Morrow family for the gift of property between Third and Fourth Streets and South and Main Streets. Properly identification number 654803344055, and graciously accept their generous donation. This the 20th day of November 2017.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for what you did.
Well, we want to thank the family for giving us this land, and it will come in value, of great value to us as we proceed with the Pifer project.
But thank you. Thank the family for what they've done, but thank you for your time and effort.
Thank you. Number nine, consider using City Lake Park for a youth mud run.
I love it.
You see, agenda of cooperation between the hospital and our Parks and Rec to do this, and I think it's a wonderful idea.
When we doing it?
In the spring, summer.
Sometime this, next year, I know, right?
16th.
June 16th.
I'm good.
16th.
Very good. Maybe I read over it. Good, good. Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 10, information. Michael has given you information about a e-cycle and paper shredding event. Counsel had asked what it would cost to have a second event. He has provided you with that. As we go into our budget session, if you want to start including that in the budget, we need to let him know. I don't, no, it may be easier to have the, just add the shredding to the event that's held at the Ag Center, and we would only pay for that session, so that may be our better avenue.
Yeah, I like that.
And what's that? Did I just remember something incorrectly? Was that not part of what our, our deal with Waste Management was?
Waste Management does it one time a year. We, council had said they wanted to do it a second time a year.
Right, right. So if we wanted to do the second.
Right. And that speaks to be something you discuss at your, when you get into the budget.
Yeah.
Okay. Number 11, there was a reminder. Stanley County Council of Governments is in Locust on Tuesday, November the 28th. We already got who I was attending. I think it was everyone, was it not?
Yes, so we'll meet at 6:00, and we'll carpool. Councilmember Aldrich had said he'd meet us out there, but as far as I know, everyone else is going to carpool, and we'll meet at 6:00, as usual.
One reminder about the Festival of Trees. We'll be at Stanley County Common. I encourage you to go by and.
When is it open up?
What's the date, opening date? I can't remember.
I don't remember any of the information sitting on my desk, but.
It's not this week, is it?
I think it's, I think it's first week in December.
Okay, okay.
We'll make sure and email you.
Thanks.
So just a reminder for anybody that hasn't contributed yet, I know everyone's intending to, but want to be able to get it in. I've let hospice know that it's coming to council, it's going to sponsor a tree personally, as they always have, but just a reminder.
Okay. Thank you to Electrical. Mike, would you pass on to your staff? Rosebrier is very thankful for what you did to get them back in business after the truck tore down all their lines and actually caused a fire, and lost some transformers and everything else. They are very thankful for what you did, and asked me to pass that on.
It was, I think it was a truck that was just unloading some things that.
It was a delivery truck to them, and it was a new driver that come around the building where they do not normally go, and took care of it. And staff took care of it this time, where it will not happen again. And they put a second pole up, and the business owner was very accommodating. We don't usually put a pole right against the building, but we did that to make sure this did not happen again, and they were, took care of the issue. If you go by, behind there, you will see where there is a fire around utility pole and grass, and the pole burned a little bit, but all has been replaced.
We'll re-signing after this.
Mr. Ferris.
I don't have anything there.
Mr. Townsend.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Ms. Hughes.
Just a quick comment on the Albemarle Downtown Christmas. I thought, I thought it was very well done. Love the ice sculptures. That's just amazing to me. And the snow off City Hall, that was so picturesque. I mean, I was like, one of the Ross or somebody, we were talking about, maybe cool if you could put it on more corners downtown, and so it would really look like it was snowing. But I know a lot of work and time and effort went into that, and I appreciate that. So I thought it was a good night.
A lot of staff hours, and we had a lot of staff downtown that entire time that night, too.
Very well done.
Parks and Rec and Public Works, I don't know if there's another apartment involved in the end or not, but they did a great job of getting that together. Ms. Aldrich.
Happy Thanksgiving. Hope everybody has a safe home.
Ms. Hall.
Go back to Downtown Christmas, and one of the things that I loved, and I really wish we could do more of on a regular basis, is the movie. I don't know if any of you saw the movie where they, on the, oh my golly, there were not very many people down there, but it was continual, and it was wonderful. I think we ought to really do that in the future at other times. I loved it. And last week, several of us attended at different times the National League of Cities meeting in Charlotte. And I guess, in a time when all we hear is bad stuff, and we don't ever hear anything good, to listen to Mark Kelly, astronaut Mark Kelly, and his wife Gabby Gifford, speaking of the tragic incident that she was the victim, fell victim to a couple of years ago, and then to see her cross that stage with such determination and force of what she had done for the people of her state and this, and this country, and what she thrives and is going to continue to do is just amazing. So glad I was able to go. Happy Thanksgiving.
Ms. Whit.
Yeah, the conference was good. I enjoyed it. The only thing I would say is thanks to everybody that was involved in Downtown Christmas. Need more smoke, snow machines? Those are great. We need a few more of those. Oh yeah, the other thing, I did mention, I was downtown, I did hear from one retailer today, and I asked how their business was, and they said, very good. They had a lot of sales that night. They had a lot of people in there that didn't know they were there. Had been there 25 years, but didn't know they were there. So if we get those kind of results, you know, just people coming down to enjoy it, I think more business owners begin to support it if we do have, may not buy right then, but may come back later. So I think overall, you know, I think it was a great event.
One of the things, based on what Chris said, we've got to get our merchants to realize that you can't measure the success of that in terms of how much business they do.
Right.
That's really not the true meaning of Downtown Christmas. If you have business, that's just an unanticipated dividend. But that's not why we stay open, and I think that's why most people. So we've got to get people to thinking a little bit different way about downtown festivals. The only other thing I have, Mr. Leonis.
Yes, sir.
In the face of these accolades that you've been given, I must, I must call, I must combat that just a little bit. Never, never, never let the power go off at the beginning of the third quarter of an Alabama football game. Got it?
My apologies, sir. My apologies.
Even if they're ahead.
Try our best, sir. How long do you think it'll come back off?
Three, I didn't see any more of the game.
Yeah, well, they were probably ahead 85 to nothing. What difference does it make?
It was such a close game, he did.
It was a nail-biter. No mercy.
All right, I need to go back and correct one thing. We had two items available, 1729. We passed the ordinance and the resolution, so I want to go back and change the ordinance to 1730. That was to approve the grant.
Change the resolution, not the ordinance.
You changed, you changed the resolution, you got to re-sign everything.
I thought you said, we had.
You had, you had an ordinance to check for a budget amendment.
Correct.
That's the one I was going to change.
No question, amendment?
No.
I'm sorry, is it?
There was a loan.
I don't believe it's a resolution for a budget amendment.
Excuse me just a minute, let me go back.
It said council adopted.
Resolutions.
Resolution 1729 authorizing the reference capital project.
Okay.
Yeah, that was a, that's a reference.
So we need to change that one to 1730.
There's a resolution that would need to be passed authorizing you or Michael to sign the loan papers.
And that's what my motion was, because it did not have a number to it. It just had Resolution 17 dash, and that's the motion. That was the motion that I made.
Okay, but the ordinance, 1729, capital project ordinance for the city of Albemarle.
Right, that's the one with this in conflict.
That's 1729.
The ordinance was, the ordinance was already adopted.
The ordinance is already.
And that was just there to show the project budget. So you, you know, you have an.
This is an old ordinance that's already been adopted?
Right.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Just happened to be that we had resolutions and ordinances with the same number on.
Right, because you have a Resolution 1701, you got an ordinance 1701.
Right, right.
That ordinance had already been adopted.
We're okay then.
Yeah.
Right, okay, all right. No problem then. All right.
Change it to.
Anything else come before council? Anyone in the audience have anything to bring before council?
I did have an accolade back to Thudham, to Electric, the Electric Division, Mr. Leonis. The heirs of Lows McSwang have a piece of property down off 138, and they contacted me and asked if I could have the city look at a line, trees on a line. And I said, yes, we, you know, we contract to have that done. And they went down and looked at it and were able to fix not only that, but an adjoining property as well. And they were just so, I mean, when I made the phone call, they were out there within a couple of days, and the heirs, some of the heirs with whom I have been in contact, were just absolutely astounded that it happened so quickly. So just accolades to the Electric Department and the tree trimming on 138.
Anything else come before council?
Yeah, that still doesn't override.
I was trying to help you now.
I'll entertain a motion that would go into closed session, North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A, 4, 5, and 6 for economic development, real estate, and personnel.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett, second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.